Cut the yard. You could cut the yard. Call me in order. Get a chair. Call me in order, please. The first order of business would be the minutes. Minutes from the April 7 meeting. I have read through the minutes. I did not see any corrections or changes.
Motion to approve is presented.
Thank you, Sam. Second by Jerry Hahn. Further discussion? All approve, say aye.
Aye.
A little one. We bugged a Joe Lieber's road in here and it's since changed, but that's the only difference that I noticed.
You appropriated funds for Joe Lieber's.
Right. And it's a little high in here. And Jim went back out and whatever he never goes.
Yeah, that's a bad part. As long as it's in there for the... And if it's a...
You lost that boot.
Yeah. That's why I brought it up. It's not really long.
Bills and transfers. You have your additional bills list. You notice there's some on the salt waste fund, there's some groups already getting paid for the cleanup, the highway program.
Yes.
We've had a good bunch of good stuff. People are... Groups involved and doing that this year. Any questions on the bills? Additional bills list?
I think we paid down Leland's whole lot for...
About $100.
He was all busy.
I didn't think that was as bad as I thought it was going to be.
I guess the question is, do we pay him for his truck or does he pay us for our truck?
Yeah. That's about seven pullouts, guys. That's not just one thing.
Right. We can take it every $500 pull. That's about normal.
They even got a bill on the bill.
We did not get a bill on the... Yeah. The one where they voted.
She's got an out for me when it comes through.
Ron, did he itemize that bill on each day?
Yes.
Is that for most of those things?
No, that was just more...
You're paying the last one.
Yes.
Before we have a motion by Bernard Ice to pay the bills, I have a second by Jerry Hahn. Any further discussion? All approve, say aye. Disapprove? The motion will carry.
See, that's what I was... That was the March. Now, February, we had the other big snowstorm. We had two or three, four out there too. Not counting the one that went over the edge of the road, so...
I got a little presentation before. It's not on the agenda. Don't get scared to go up there. Okay, this wasn't on the agenda purposely so I could get all my ducks in line. You know, over the last several years, in particular the last few months, law enforcement folks around the country have kind of taken a hit from the media and some actions they've taken have kind of hurt the, I guess probably the law enforcement's morale. It's today I want to bring up a fellow in our local department, A.J. Lewis. A.J., would you come forward, please? I'm going to read a part of a letter of accommodation that the sheriff presented to A.J. and then I want to do a little proclamation myself. If you remember, A.J. was the officer that pulled the lady out of the burning, or smoking apartment. Can you maybe try and pull him out of an apartment? I've been thinking about that since 5:00 is going. Deputy Lewis should be commended for his actions. He put the lives of the citizens of Nelson County ahead of his own safety. Deputy Lewis entered a life-threatening situation without hesitation to save another from certain peril. Away from his vehicle, he faced no means of communication and limited visibility upon entering the apartment. Deputy Lewis did not falter in his sworn duty to protect the citizens of our community. Quick decision, actions of Deputy Lewis removed Connie McCandless? Is that how you pronounce it?
Yes.
McCandless, as well as the other residents of the building, from harm's way for greater love, has no man in the nest. And I'm not going to go into the rest of the preaching that Sergeant Jones put down here for you. Might give you the big hit. But today I want to read a proclamation. Whereas Deputy Sheriff A.J. Lewis has consistently proven himself to be an outstanding police officer, whereas Deputy Sheriff A.J. Lewis has demonstrated his dedication to the mission and values of the Nelson County Sheriff's Department, the County of Nelson, and his fellow men and women in law enforcement, whereas in a display of exemplary service without regard of his own welfare, Deputy Sheriff A.J. Lewis put his life on the line to save another by entering a smoke-filled apartment and rescuing a female resident. Therefore, be resolved in recognition of great heroism, exemplary service, and dedication to the citizens of Nelson County. I ask all citizens today to join me on April 21st to recognize this day of gratitude as Deputy Sheriff A.J. Lewis' day here in Nelson County. Thank you. Can you imagine pulling him out of the... I won't see any of the crap. It is great to have... You know, we have a lot of, I consider, very, very loyal employees on our team. And I'm always hesitant to bring forth someone and highlight them because, you know, you start picking and choosing. But this just went beyond. It caught my heart when I heard it. And most certainly the citizens of Nelson County are lucky to have you. And again, your daddy is part of the reason why you are who you are today. But I've known him since we were little kids. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I mean, you're buying lunch, dude. Are you going to buy him lunch now?
Well, you know, I thought I'd do that. But he can stop down and tell Dorfman some meetings. You have to draw the lines over, A.J. Okay. Next order of business would be the second reading of the zoning amendments. We've already held first reading and advertised for a second. Entertain a motion to approve on second reading and adoption.
I'll make that motion.
Motion been made by Sam Hudgens. Is there a second? Second by Keith Metcalf. Is that right, Keith?
Yes.
All approve, say aye. Disapprove? The motion will carry. Next would be the second reading of the building code ordinance. That was on the amended agenda I sent to you fellows by email. Are you advertising for first reading? Advertised for second reading and adoption of this ordinance. Did a motion to approve on second reading?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Jerry. Is there a second? Second by Bernard Ice. Discussion, there's some question marks. All approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion carry. Yup, a little slow on that one.
Not a lot, Kevin. Well, I know it's necessary, but I don't like it.
Dale, report.
Okay, today we have a total of 114 inmates. We have three in Hardin County. These are females, so we'll overcrowd the females again. We have 37 state inmates. We have eight at Southern Weekends. So we have an in-house total of 103 inmates. Our daily average for March, controlled intake, we have 554 mandates. That was an average of 17 a day. Class Ds, we had 263 mandates. That was an average of... Nelson County inmates, we had 2,628 mandates. That was a daily average of 84. So our total from March was 3,445 mandates, an average of 111 inmates at that rate. New arrests for March, males, we had 158. Females, we had 51. That was a total of 209 releases. We had 172 males, 52 females, so a total of 224 releases. Sixty inmates out of district court, we got three. We have six at Southern Weekends. Waiting for court, we have 17. Some of these in districts waiting for court, they're felonies that's waiting for the arraignment for Circuit, so they're not all district. We don't have any on-home incarceration. So our controlled intake state inmates, we have 26. Class Ds, we have 11. We have four controlled intake at Southern Weekends. Community service, we have six, which this morning we added two more to our community service. Work rates, we have three. Circuit court sentence to jail time, we have three. Man to court, incarceration on Circuit, we don't have any. Circuit court, we've got 33 that's waiting to go to court. So we have a total of 51 inmates that has not been sentenced. That's all I have to say.
Okay. EMS report, Dale.
Nothing new to report today. I want announcement, the dispatch meetings this afternoon at 3:30 at EMS train station. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. This news media getting a little warm back here. I want to keep them happy.
Thank you.
I don't know if it will kick on or not. Yeah, I think I hear it. Next would be landfill solid waste report. Brad?
Our surveyors finished up our survey for the landfill. You know, and I told you guys they do that every year, so in about two to three weeks, I'll have that information for you guys. It's important. That way you can kind of track how much just came in, but also how much longer we got at the landfill where we have to worry about our expansion. Sam had asked, have I ordered a meter yet? I have ordered it. It takes about two to three weeks to come in. Why so long? I don't know.
Probably not.
The guy emailed last week wanting to confirm the size of our pipe, Jim. I mean, it's no big deal. It's just a ring that snaps in the pipe outward, so... We'll actually install it ourselves. It's really install, but the guy's got to come down and calibrate it. So once we get it installed, there's still about a week delay before we truly use it.
Have you picked out a spot where you can put it?
Yeah. I mean, right behind the landfill, there's that pump station. And on what you would call the intake side of the pump, there's a pipe that flows into it. There's a little short section right there that we'll install. And then the device itself has to stay in the pump house because it needs to be heated, which we heat those pumps during the winter time. From there, always my office to be able to track it from that pump.
Oh, it's going to be heated, so it'll freeze it, but...
But it's going to be on the intake line? Not on the pressure side?
Yes. Not on pressure, on intake side.
I'm not sure they got a gadget that will handle that.
Pressure.
Pressure side. I'm not sure that they made it.
Outside of that, we've scheduled our tire removal. The guy, or I passed a guy to schedule it. He's trying to work it in. In the scheme of things, you know, we think we got a lot of tires. We done, I mean, it won't take them two days to haul it out, so we're kind of a fill-in for these guys. So he's trying to figure out the time they come on through and we'll load it ourselves. Outside of that, just regular business tasks room.
Okay. Road department report, first item is you solve storage facility bids for the concrete work. First, it was, you guys, media, you've got tabulation chief from mailbox. The first page is the first, only one of the components of this facility. It shows the $95,000 change. You'll go to the second to last page on that report, I believe it shows the total project. Whereas you have to get the cover from a bulk storage incorporated, which is the company that the state contract prices with. And you'll have to add the work that we're going to do on the project ourselves to come up with $190,787. Everybody following on that? I just wanted you to report that this was the only component of it. Come in, I think the price, Jim?
Prices are good. I've already talked with Michael Construction. They've given me three projects. He's worked on similar type work and he's comfortable with it, familiar with it. They're a flatwork, concrete company, wall company. They do a good job, so I feel good about it. Bulk Storage Incorporated, they're a state contract price company that they've done probably a dozen of these type structures. This structure's going to be very simple. It's going to look just like what the state's putting in throughout the state at their state highway garages. It's 10-foot-high concrete walls with a... And this membrane roof, pre-engineered membrane roof covering system is 30 feet high, so you're talking about a 40-foot-high dome per se.
Oh, just the roof itself is 30 feet?
Yeah. So you're altogether 40 foot up in there. It's going to stick up there, you know? It's going to be different than that barn we got back there.
It's a lysite hole in the membrane.
About 15-year warranty on their, what I've seen on their plans. And I've got several sets of their pre-engineered plans from other, from Hardin County and from Lerue County. It's got a 15-year life on it. 15-year warranty on it.
Now, is that destructive on Joseph membrane?
The membrane is where I read the...
Okay.
Now, again, this is a state...
And typical what we get on a Dura-Lash roof, 15 to 20 years?
This is a master agreement with the state highway, you know, and we're buying off of it. It's pre-negotiated and everything else, so...
It's just like those hay barbers, same stuff?
I would, it looks like it. It's probably a stronger type. You know, it's got to meet all the wind loads and all the snow loads for this area.
So I would recommend, if I could get a motion to approve Michael Construction Company and then also the purchase of the state price contract, the, what are you going to keep? The balance for the roof system as presented today.
We'll issue a purchase order to...
Motion to approve by Bernard Ice. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Well, I couldn't. Second?
We just wanted to see that first before we done that.
Yes.
You'll be happy.
I'll be happy.
Second. All approve, say aye.
Discussion, no, no.
Okay, discussion. Okay. Discussion.
How are we going to pay for this? Why we got this before we got a budget presentation?
Why? Because we've been talking about it. It's time to relax. And you got to order this stuff. I assure you, it's $60,000 less than what we initially thought it was. And because of approximately $55,000, $60,000 of road salt money we didn't use this year, $100,000 plus that the county judge didn't spend on blacktopping.
What?
Yeah.
But so our blacktop money's going over the salt?
No. Well, could be.
Ain't...
Not to play my mischief's current, current year's budget.
That's what I'm talking about. I got to have a lot of patching.
And anyway, that's where...
Falling in.
Now, who made the motion? Bernard Ice made the motion. Second by Sam. All approve, say aye. Disapprove? Motion carries. Was your a no or a yes?
I was a yes.
Yes, okay. You got to have some faith in the system.
I would have preferred the presentation of the budget before you allocated money out.
But you know, it's going to be another secret date before you approve it, but you know...
Yeah, but we could have called a meeting if we had to.
Bulk Yard Report, final report.
All right. This is a bit expression. Now, what this is, is from time I have records back to now, what we done on Bulk Yard. Kind of gives you a feel for what we've spent over the years on it and where it's kind of going. We've, bear in mind, there's no equipment cost being charged back on this report. So if you look at your bottom right one, that's, you know, 2015. And that chart kind of shows where the costs are, you know, as far as how I break it down, or the graph there. The blue line on that graph kind of shows it somewhat leveled out, you know, over the past five to six years with what you would hope. You'd actually hope it would keep going down, but it doesn't.
And talk about this budget coming out, Ron and I figured out we're charging closer to the real new number, but we haven't changed that figure since we started 14 years ago. 15 years ago, charging money back.
What did you say, Brad? The cost doesn't keep, doesn't go level with the landfill cost?
No, what I'm saying is it's leveled out. If you look at the chart, you can't take one spike up or down. It's kind of leveled out. We see that background real quick. A little above...
I don't get the chart.
The trend is it's a little above $100,000 every year.
Yeah.
You know, you kind of try to average some of that out. And just trying to guess and put two and two together, this year was pretty snowy to start up.
I can't believe we had that many times.
That may be why it's down a little bit.
Sure didn't look like it was on this one.
Right.
It did round out the outside of the outside of the salt and didn't crack real good. Very, I'm going to buy it. Of course, when you have scrap metal days, we don't get any scrap anymore, guys.
Yeah.
That's a little bit different.
That's probably the big drop there. Made this town from 2000, metal got built halfway down.
We had one little spike in 2009, but if you guys remember, we had a bad storm that come through at that time and the fiscal court decided to pick brush up. We made part of our bulk yarding pickup. That's the reason it threw that landfill tossed up and later tossed up that year. But I noted that on this right here, but...
16 million were gone.
At 65, sick of today standard, does not go to the fringes, about $60,000, $65,000, depends on if you're a few days either way. Sometimes you're through it in five weeks, sometimes it's seven weeks.
Next year, can we put this on two pages? Some reason it's getting harder and harder to read.
I'd like some of it to go away. It is a lot of information, I know that.
Actually, it's good information.
But it's a true cost that is funded directly on the solid waste department.
Everybody's monthly fee that they're paying to pay for this.
Yeah. The solid waste department gets billed exactly like they would for anything else, and they truly paid the landfill for that landfill cost. I mean, it's a true expense. They truly transferred money out of solid waste to the road department. So, I mean, it's an expense, guys. But it's built into our 1450,000. I mean, that's part of what we did.
We wrote it down.
Okay, that it? Down on item number eight, there were no board appointments, so I'm going to just let you know that. So we'll go into seven and go into the presentation of the budget to the magistrates. As required by state law, county judge by May 1, is required to give magistrates a proposed budget. Like I told Randy, talked to Randy yesterday by email, this is a budget, a work in progress. There probably will be some changes as new numbers become available in the next 60 days.
Am I supposed to say thank you or what?
Thanks for the salt bar. 15-year trying to give that time. Haven't I, Bernard?
That's true.
I don't know what to say when you add this thing to it.
Okay, I'm just going to, I'm going to run over some of that, got the workings of it, so you can go back and look at the history. Except, let me just talk about a little bit about the highlights of the budget. First, let me talk about the assumptions. The assumptions are that revenue will be pretty neutral as far as the general fund goes. We did have about 50, what, about 62 million in new growth last year. They waste about $89,000, $90,000. That's not a lot of money when you're looking at a $20 million budget.
How much do you say is on it?
About 62,446,254 dollars.
And how much is the tax?
Waste too.
Quick waste of about $89,298, less than 4% that sheriff gets.
Thinking about 67%.
We're assuming a cost of living increase for the employees at 8/10 of a percent, a little less than 1%. We're assuming that most of the supply is going to go up 2% to 3%. Central dispatch had asked for about 20% increase from us, and the budget I've allocated 10%. Hopefully, they can live within that and maybe get some more out of the city as well than increase. Health insurance, 15%. We're probably going to ask the employees to contribute a portion of that as we go over the next 30 to 60 days, whereas we might be able to reduce the county's cost down to at least 75, 25, or 50/50. Probably going to shoot for 50/50, and hopefully we can do 75, 25 of the increase, follow what I'm saying, like we did a few years ago. The workers' comp, we are estimated to be 10%. Liability, we already got a firm number at 5%. CERAs, all those are self-explanatory. It can come down a little bit. Utilities, 5%. Fuel, 5%. And the BIDC, because we have a cost of living increase in there, is 8/10 of a percent of the cost of living. Something that going to have a negative impact on, and no fault to the county clerk, is the way that the cars are being taxed. The budget this year shows about $174,000 less in the general fund that we've got to work off of because of that change. It might be more and it might be less, but that's probably a good middle number to go on. So that's going to have a, I mean, off the top, when you start out, you're almost $200,000 in the hole just to start with. So that kind of caused a little problem for the general fund when you're only expecting to gain less than $90,000 for the year. So you're already kind of in the hole as you start out. I have proposed two new police cruiser, two new police vehicles, the SUVs, $41,000 in the general fund, the budget this year for Wickland improvements through a grant from the Saratrick Preservation Fund. I've proposed an increase for the deputy coroner and coroner of $100 a month, trying to move their salaries up, come more in line with the rest of the state. I did a little survey of the coroner's office, of the total expenses to the coroner's office. Scott County spends 112, I tried to get counties our size or within 2,000, 3,000 of our population. Scott County spends about $112,000. Hardin County, which is bigger, they spend $231,000. Marion County spends about $54,000. We spend, I think it's like 20, what, around $22,000?
28,000.
28,000.
What kind of increases, you told me that?
$100 a month.
$200.
But that's in the budget, and I'm going to give you a report on that, on that office and expenditures there. We're very far behind the rest of the state, yeah. And if you're going to get the deputies and the professionalism, you need to have the deputies and keep their training up, you need to pay them at least a fair little bit. On the road fund, as you've heard, we're $271,000 in the hole to start with because of the road tax. We are able to keep $120,000 in East Magisterial District in blacktopping funds. We're able to budget a new backhoe for the road department. We're able to fully fund Salt Barn. Do you have any note? Two projects that, one project is the bridge replacement program, the 8020 of the state. I've been told that they're, hope to have the funds available. So Sam, Sam's Bridge will be in there this year. Now, whether we get it or not is a different story, but I've got it in the budget.
You shouldn't announce that.
Well, I had to. I had to. It's a positive from the judge's perspective. And also in District 2, there's a head wall project that needs to be done for safety reasons. This is not a want, a wish list project. It's because of safety reasons. And Jim's already put some numbers together on that. That's the one out on...
Long road.
Long road, yeah. On the solid waste, we've got a new garbage truck budgeted. The ambulance service, the new four-wheel-drive ambulance, and we're still up in the air on the remount yet, but it's in the budget, but we're still up in the air. I've got some discussion I want to have with Dale 101 on that as we move forward. Those are kind of, I consider, the highlights and there's no, you know, you have to take your basic services, your basic salaries, your retirement, your health insurance, your benefit package, your utilities, your supplies that you need. Start with that and then you work around, see what you, how you can make it work.
Health insurance assumption, 15% increase. What, what we did last year, like 20%? And you know that accident came in there?
I can't remember the guy, 20 years...
We were a little less than budgeted, took that much.
I can get you a history on that.
I think last year was 20 and...
Just a guess.
Yeah.
It was actually, I think it was less than 20, I think it was 17% last year.
Last year, I think so.
We budgeted 20 and 17. The 15% increase this year is just a guess.
No, well, it's an educated guess, but I went back and talked to the broker and based based on the history, but now that can change in a 60-day window. It could go up to 25% in 60 days. You just don't know that.
Did you say the salt barn's budgeted in there?
$200,000. First, even if they start first of June, Jim said the head voices wouldn't come in until July budget.
The liability insurance is firm though, correct?
Yes. And we've got two more claims to go in on it.
One yesterday?
One yesterday. Of course, it's not our fault, so we'll have a little segregation hurt. That general fund was a trick, wasn't it, Rhonda? It was a trick, and we're still not through with it.
You've got a lot of years manipulating places. Good thing you've got a lot of experience in manipulating places.
Oh, well, we call it survival, without raising taxes. You'll hear that one too. Now, I'm just going to put this out on the table. There's going to come a time that whether this fiscal court or another fiscal court has to consider new revenue. You're getting down, the last six years we've spent, this court and myself, we've got to the point that just the basic government services are being taken care of. And that's what most people want, just the basic government service. But every once in a while, you have things that this community really needs for the future, and that may require an increase in property tax.
We've been doing it seven years ago.
2007 is the last time we took the 4%. Yeah.
When in 2007?
Now, I can tell you, the 4% on this hand would be only $132,000 out, so your new, your new number, so you're looking at a $40,000 swing there probably.
So we will get back to money loss from the gas and taxing.
Well, now, that's, you'll never get that.
Right, we'll get it back.
But this is general fund though, Bernard. This is general fund. Gas taxes, road funds.
Because we hadn't taken a tax increase in years, our property tax went down one last year.
Property, real estate, we've kept it the same. Your personal property went down, has to by law.
Yeah, it's still 40. Well, it's true. Does it stay the same, or does it go down again this year?
Depends on what we get on the assessments. I haven't got the final assessments on it, especially the personal property tax. We've just got the real estate tax. And it's not confirmed, and that's just a general outline.
It just messes with the tangible, don't bother the personal, right?
No, that's the same thing, can't, personal, same thing. Real estate, real estate.
It didn't bother real estate.
But we went through a period of growth over $100,000, I mean, $100 million a year for about 10 years there. But we're edging back up, or 60-some million is still a pretty good growth, and that kept us from having to raise property taxes over the years. Now, 21 years ago, when it took over offices, 15.3 cents. I know I've preached this to a lot, to a lot of people, and I don't know if it's registering or not. 15.3 cents today is 14.3. There's not too many entities can say you've lowered it, but, and we lowered it, and we're probably, reality should have kept it the same, because when you do have to raise it, and you get the gradual complaints.
Are you talking on tangible?
Oh, no, real estate, real estate. And Jeff and I have had this discussion, the 911 service is the place that's going to need new revenue somewhere along the line. It's, you know, to keep the professional level that the community's come to expect. When you dispatch in the old way you worked 20 years ago, and then now you're doing this new way, you dance, you got to pay the fitter. But I'm not proposing any new tax. We're going to live within our means. It's one of the.
Originally, it was budgeted.
And it takes cutting.
Off the 911.
Jobs, and then we'll do it.
Landline fees.
Because the landline fees are way down.
Which is gone. So unless you can recoup it from the cell phone numbers.
And we're not.
And we're not.
It's 70 cents a month on the cell phone. They try to get a 30 cent increase.
It's not based on our numbers, it's equally divided across the.
But how many are not paying at all?
Put the Walmart phone directors.
Just put it this way, if there is any retirements in the general fund category, and I'm not looking at the sheriff's department, but maybe some other categories within the general fund, where we can, we have included the ambulance and jail, because they're subsidized out of other funds, then that's what we're going to have to look to make some cuts for the next two or three years.
See, Jim?
Can you lay magistrate's off? Can we lay one of them guys off? Do you see their blind items off the gauze?
I think we keep out before magistrate's.
Which one?
I don't know which.
They're all straw.
Paper scissors. Just don't go by experience, right?
Longevity.
Okay.
We're starting to talk.
Also, Elaine brought up a point on the budget. Back in the, was it the March meeting? I think it was the March meeting that I presented you guys a copy of the jail budget.
Yes.
Yeah, that failed to get into the minutes, so as a matter of correction, if Elaine can make a note of that to cover me for statutory responsibility that was actually met, no whiteboard actually necessary on it, just a presentation that was made. Any other questions on the budget from a?
We'll take a glance.
Not at this particular time.
It did require, the budget, just let you know, did require some creativity. If you have any specific questions, myself or Ron can answer. I don't know, I'm not going to throw Ron under the bus.
Where creativity come from? You, Rhonda, or?
I'm, I'm, we need to finish the statement.
Rhonda was not the creative person. I'm not going to throw her under the bus.
We kind of think she's probably the calm in troubled waters if you want to.
She probably said, "Don't know, we can't do that."
There you go.
We came to compromise on it.
So you just go home and tie it.
Any other business report, court, magistrates, we'll bring up anything else? Oh, one more thing. How's our guy doing on the great off? The one that eat you hard? It's a learning experience, I guess, Terry. I don't know, you have to ask Jim and Robert.
He's running it. He's running it the way, the way our guys run it. We don't switch lines or anything like that now, so he is running it.
So he is running it now?
During Bulk Yard, he was told to get in there and run it, and he ran it, and he started.
It's a learning curve, you know. Any other questions? Crowd have anything want to ask? Motion to adjourn by Bernard Ice, second by Jeff Lear. All approved, say aye. Disapproved? Motion carries. Brad's got a meeting at 10:30 after recycling.
I'm about to do the adjourn, or you say?
Under Old New Business, I failed to bring up soil conservation is required by new laws to make the presentations at court annually. You should have hauled it in, I'm sorry.
Well, anyway, we presented a, hopefully y'all got it, our plan of work and our budget this past year, we took in off the taxpayers, $113,000.
That's a special tax that's on your?
Yes, soil conservation tax. There's other taxes besides the general fund tax that Dean keeps referring to, but we get $113,000. We also get about $130-some thousand from other sources, but we try to live within our budget. We were kind of maybe embarrassed a little bit last year. The state held us up on funds. They were late coming out. We had to come fiscal port and borrow $14,000 to make it to the end of the year, to when we started getting additional funds, but graciously y'all let us have it, and we appreciate this and that. But we're taking that into account this year, and hopefully, we're not going to have to do that this time. We're trying to figure some way around it.
Just to might enlighten the public on what type of projects that your organization gets involved with, especially with the media here.
Land resources. We try to conserve land and water. We try to do anything.
Erosion control.
Yes.
You helped us at the park several years ago with erosion control project?
Yes, sir.